We're ready. Good evening. It is April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is five P M. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Pittkin County, Colorado. There was an update this afternoon sent out that this would be a virtual only meeting. If you are over at five thirty East Main Street, you are currently at a meeting with the Board of County Commissioners in the city of Aspen. You are not at Planning and Zoning. It is my birthday. This meeting has been called to order. Present from Pittkin County Planning and Zoning, myself, Jeffrey Woodruff, Jasmine Tiger, Monty Thompson, and Suzanne Caskin. We do have a quorum from staff. We have Ellen Susano, Tim Malloy, acting like staff, and Bonnie Shiles. Cindy Huben is currently across the street, even though she is on the agenda, at the joint B O C C City of Aspen meeting. On the Brush Creek Metro District, we have Tom Newland, and it looks like from the city of, and sorry, Enric Stevens on the line, and then from the city of Aspen, John Spees. Thank you so much for joining us. Appreciate it. Any comments? This is a public hearing. Any Commissioner comments unrelated to the Brush Creek Master Plan? Seeing no hands, any staff comments unrelated to the Brush Creek Master Plan?
Only to again thank Jeffrey Woodruff, who is not only present but chairing the Planning and Zoning Commission on his birthday. So salutations to Jeffrey on his birthday.
Thank you. I'm trying to get that perfect attendance medal. Everyone else wants the hundred day pin in the city. I just want the perfect P and Z attendance medal.
I'm thinking that we should call an ambulance.
I appreciate it. And I realize that this is twenty years in the making. I am fifty-four years in the making, so it's important to be here. Bonnie, anything unrelated to Brush Creek Metro District or Tim Malloy? Unrelated?
No.
This is, this is a public hearing. People may be dialed in. Again, not at the city of Aspen, B O C C meeting. Any public comment unrelated to the Brush Creek Metro District?
We have nobody in attendance.
Excellent. So at this point, we're going to move to our one item, which is a public hearing for the Brush Creek Master Plan adoption. This is a continuation of a hearing that we held jointly on March twenty-ninth with the Planning and Zoning Commission, oh, sorry, jointly on March eighth with the B O C C, and then we had a follow-up meeting on March twenty-ninth. So this is intended to be the final meeting, a public hearing, which would be the adoption of the Brush Creek Master Plan. Again, nineteen years later, given our currently adopted one is two thousand and three, and this would certainly help us as we look at potential location extensive both the Brush Creek Park and Ride, the E O T C, as well as at Cozy Point, and I understand that's probably why John Spees has joined us. So thank you so much. I will turn it over to Ellen Susano at this point.
Thank you, Jeffrey. So this, as you said, this is a public hearing, and you did introduce some of the members of the public who are present to join in the discussion tonight. But I did want to note that Rick Stevens is joining us. He's a representative of the Brush Creek Metro District, and he is on a very short timeline here and asked if he could, before we launch into our presentation and public comment beyond that, if he could address the the board so that he may then be on his way. Is that all right, Jeffrey?
Yeah, Rick, we welcome your comments and appreciate your time this evening.
So to unmute Bonnie, is it?
It's our six, but he is unmuted.
Okay.
And I heard Bonnie, you said you were going to put us on full screen, so it was easier to read lips.
Yes. Are you not coming through that way?
I still see Hollywood squares.
Okay.
And Rick is on the phone anyway.
Not that we want the phone full screen, but it would be wonderful.
Okay, hopefully that works.
Rick Stevens, you have the floor in any case, whether you're full screen or not.
And we don't, we don't hear you, Rick.
So, Rick, my former career, we called it reduced precision, but from a technology standpoint, we would love to hear your, your input.
Maybe tell him again how to un, well, he's unmuted already, right?
Right. He is unmuted. Rick, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
There we go.
Are you trying to contact with Rick about our comments?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. I can't hear too well. If so, I'll tell you that what we've got through the A I S here all looks good to us. I mean, all of our comments, I think, have been incorporated. And we just urged the Planning and zoning commission to approve the master plan as drafted.
And I believe Rick is, Rick is able to communicate now. Rick, did you want to add anything to that? And then I'll
Can you, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think you know, you guys have extended yourselves significantly the last couple of years and recognize that we had a plan that was nineteen years old. A lot of water under the bridge, as they say. Lots of things to clean up, I think, even after adoption of this master plan. So Tom and I both look forward to working with you guys and our boards to get some of this stuff up to date and refreshed and backed by good data and all those things. I anticipate that if you have other comments that may, you know, create significant dialogue between parties here, we probably ought to make sure that that is managed well. But other than that, we're trying to keep it to our our job descriptions of road, water, and trash and, and joint agreements between our municipalities and cities and counties and states. So I appreciate all the effort you guys put into it.
Thank you. Did, are we going to come back to Tom if there's additional after your presentation, Ellen and Tim?
That sounds fair. Yep.
So, Rick, I'm going to go back to Ellen. I appreciate you joining us this evening and apologies if we interrupted your evening.
No worries. I think this is important and I'm going to be listening, so we'll just see how it goes.
Okay, then. Thank you, Jeffrey. I'll, I'll go ahead and, and jump back in. So you've introduced Tim Malloy. I think everybody knows he's the planning consultant who's been working with us, doing the lion's share of the work on updating the Brush Creek Master Plan. And he and I will be tag teaming the presentation again tonight. And in terms of action, we are asking the planning commissions to take action tonight to adopt the two thousand and twenty-two Brush Creek Master Plan and to direct the chair to sign the resolution that's, that's in your packet to formally adopt the plan. And in terms of our presentation, Tim and I are, as we did at, at the last couple of meetings, going to walk through just the changes that were made as a result of the, the comments, feedback discussion we had at the March twenty-ninth meeting with the P and C. We will also briefly review the future land use map and the zoning map, both which were included in your packet, as you have not seen those previously. And then we'll turn it back over to Jeffrey to get planning commission comments and open the public hearing. And but I will say that Jeffrey, I'm coming back to you to ask whether you prefer to have us, we will put the, Tim will put the master plan up on the screen so that we can go directly to the sections that have been changed. And we can either take comments from the planning commission as we as we identify each change that's been made, or if you prefer, we can just get through all of the changes and then take planning commission comments. Do you have a preference?
I think the latter. This is our third, third meeting on this, so I would say you guys go full steam ahead and we'll, we'll come back with any clarifying questions at the end of your presentation.
Okay, excellent. So, so, yeah, if you have thoughts, comments, go ahead and jot them down so you don't forget, and, and we'll come back to that. So, Tim, if you could go ahead and, and and take the screen, that would be great.
So can it, is, is this acceptable to everyone in terms of resolution and size?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to move Ellen to the first highlighted change, so you can take it from there. And we are in the, the one point two non-residential development and special events on page seven of the document, where there's been a change to the objectives.
Okay, so in the, in the two thousand and three plan, this objective said preclude commercial uses that would change the rural residential character of the planning area. And in response to discussion at the last meeting, and specifically in response to Brush Creek Metro District's request, this was changed to preclude all commercial, yes, all commercial, public, government, and institutional uses that would change the rural residential character of the planning area. And staff has suggested that in addition to that change, we add some qualifying verbiage here to say to address the impacts around preservation of rural residential characters. So we said added including but not limited to consideration of size, scale, intensity of use, outdoor lighting, traffic generation, and noise. That hopefully that will make implementation of, of that objective a little, a little bit more straightforward. And I believe that the John Spees may, may want to weigh in on this particular change when we get to public comment.
So next we have changes to the three or two of the three action items under that objective. And the first one was at the request of, of the Brush Creek Metro District in their March twenty-fourth letter, and where they requested that we include some additional examples of acceptable agricultural uses. So we've, in addition to hay and horse boarding, we've added riding lessons, raising food crops, and animal husbandry to that list. I would point out that this is a, this is a an action item to modify the zoning. So when that zoning actually occurs, that rezoning actually occurs, there would be a lot of discussion about what the permitted uses are and, you know, what, what the zoning should be and whether or not, you know, what the restrictions related to those uses should be. So this is, you know, kind of to give people an idea about what should occur in the rezoning, but the rezoning itself will be far more detailed.
Okay, and then the next, then, and then number two there for action, for action items is referring to the going from going directly to the Brush Creek Park and Ride, specific to that use and encouraging the city of Aspen and the county and C dot to limit commercial uses at the park and ride to those which directly support commuter uses and contain minimal floor area. The, we were asked to add that temporary or seasonal mobile vending carts as an example of an acceptable commercial use at the, at the park and ride. And as I, I believe that the approval for, for the mobile vending carts that was zoning commission was for temporary or seasonal mobile vending carts. So this just reiterates the direction you've already taken.
Okay, so next we move down to the growth management house size section. And this is the modification to action item one, which identifies the house size limitation as requested by the Brush Creek Metro District in their comments letter. So we've added that, and then we've changed this, the rest of this language to say that T D Rs would not be available to increase house size as opposed to what it had said before, which they would be allowed to, you know, be used to increase house size. So that has been struck. And then we go ways here, and now we are under the affordable housing section, action item three.
Right, so this was a, a change again to an existing provision in, in the two thousand and three plan in suggesting that the county policy discouraging the development of affordable housing outside of established urban growth boundaries, including as relates to the Cozy Point Ranch, be that that, that that statement be modified to include qualifying words of temporary, sorry, this is little permanent or temporary affordable housing. We add those, those qualifiers, and so we have. And again, the city of Aspen, John Spees may have some comments regarding this specific language.
Okay, so also under agriculture, which is the next section, we have a change to the, we have an additional action item number four, which has been added in response to Jeffrey's comment regarding wanting to encourage people to use more advanced or smart irrigation. So this language was added. And basically it's saying that to reduce water loss through evaporatranspiration and, and watering when soil is already moist, use some of these smart techniques, which would involve, you know, pipe irrigation and avoiding overhead watering and flood irrigation, and the fact that these systems use moisture sensors, including sensors that are connected to NOAA so that you can know when there's been enough, you know, natural moisture through rain, snow, et cetera, that the soil is moist enough and doesn't need to be watered. So, and we've included a, a link to that, to that website where that soil moisture data is kept. And this was again at, at Jeffrey's request. So now we're into open space, recreation and tourism, and under that, under the open space section, we have removed, I'm going to just do this one, Ellen, because we've removed this discussion regarding the agreement between Brush Creek Metro District and Pittkin County to address the Aspen Mass property, because the Aspen Mass property has already had its development rights transferred. And so it is essentially, its future is known. So there was no need for this any further, and so it's been removed. And then we've, we have an alternate language for, for number five, and Ellen, you can talk to this one. Oops, Ellen, you're muted.
Sorry, yes. So just new language caucus would like to work with Pittkin County Open Space and Trails on management updates to ensure that wildlife habitat is protected and that the impacts of recreation are considered and mitigated accordingly. So that, that made sense, and we went ahead and, and just dropped that in.
So what, essentially what will happen here is this one will go away, and it will be substituted for this one. And I suspect one of the things that was concerned was that we were saying here about participating in the monitoring and analysis, and I think that seemed cumbersome to the, to the staff and the open space and trails board, so. Moving down. So under scene equality, under action item number three, this is one that we discussed last time, and I think the language was kept the same, but Ellen was going to be looking into reviewing the lighting regs to make sure that there wasn't something in the regs as currently being drafted that would suggest a revision to this language, which I believe she found wasn't the case, and she can elaborate on that. But basically this still says encourage the county to consider amendments to the lighting regulations to further minimize the impacts of outdoor lighting as new information and technologies need available.
Yeah, really, there was no, there was no point in removing that because I think it's good direction to always consider new information and technology and, and make amendments to the lighting regulations as that technology is is available. So there really was no need to eliminate this, this recommendation. And if we go to the, scroll down to the next change, there was a question as to whether the current lighting regulations effectively address the Brush Creek Park and Ride. And basically basically that, that they, they do address the park and ride. There's some question as to whether they, they are as, as thorough as they could be, and the recommendation from our staff was just that we add this, this recommendation that the lighting at the Brush Creek Park and Ride be consistent with lighting code in effect at the time of application for improvements to the facility with the intent of addressing really the most important things, both public safety and impacts to the surrounding area. And there, there needs to be some balance there. So that, that's the language that we recommend to address, best address the lighting regulations as, as they relate to the park and ride. And we are in the, you will be seeing lighting regulations coming to you in a revised format in the not-too-distant future.
Okay, so next underwater quality. We have a change to, we have two changes here, actually. One to action item number four, and this is the one where we had the discussion about whether or not we would require, we could require the protection of groundwater, particularly domestic wells, and, and that was deemed to be an acceptable change to the language, so that's been changed. And then number five has been altered, and Ellen, you can go over that one. Oops, you're muted again, Ellen.
Sorry, I have dogs in the background who are barking, so I'm trying to mute them, not myself. So this is a recommendation actually that came from Jeffrey Woodruff and, and really wanting to reiterate the importance of making sure that water use is, is very responsible, given, given that we are in the drought that we were, that we are in, and water conservation measures need to be very directly addressed. So
And this is that same language that we went over in the ag section.
Yeah, right. And so we thought it was appropriate to include it here as well. And again, John Spees with the city may, may want to address one aspect of this, of this recommendation that relates to irrigation of hay in, in hay production, and we'll, we'll let him address that when we get to public comment.
And then lastly, in this section, we've added this item ten, action item ten, which reads strictly enforce the stream setbacks in the planning area, in particular Cougar Canyon and Lower Brush Creek. And that again came from the, the March twenty-fourth Brush Creek Metro District letter. So we go a ways here. So down under, I'm sorry, under roads, traffic, and safety, we're looking at action items, action item five in particular. And this was, I'll actually take this one, Ellen, because I had the conversation with, with G R about this. So the Brush Creek Metro District has had expressed a concern that there isn't a lot of information, either traffic counts, and I have confirmed that there is no, there is no C dot access permit for this intersection. And so they've had this concern that there isn't good information as a base upon which to evaluate future changes to land use in the surrounding area, including the Cozy Point property, and whether or not the impacts on this intersection would then warrant some sort of change to the design of the intersection or signalization or whatever. And so I spoke with G R about this, and he indicated that the, he felt the best way to address this was to just have have an, this language that says hire an independent traffic consultant to conduct traffic counts at the Juniper Hill Road intersection, and then prepare the requisite report, which could be shared with the county and C dot. And he felt that C dot would accept a report, you know, done by a reputable, reputable traffic engineer, keep it in their file so that it could be used at a future date when this if and when reevaluation of this intersection needed to occur. And then there's this change to, to add this and Juniper Hill to this, to action item number six, which is wanting to consider the impacts to health, safety, and quality of life for caucus area residents. And we had already listed Highway eighty-two in the vicinity of Brush Creek Road, but we wanted to add and Juniper Hill, so at their request. So Ellen, you'll be next here. And now we are under transit and action item number seven.
Right, so this, this makes sense again, recommended by Brush Creek Metro District that this, that the city be required to plan for and place safe, direct, and functional transit and make pedestrian access to the Cozy Point Ranch. So pretty straightforward, and we, we went ahead and included it.
So under solid waste, we've added this at Jeffrey's request and comment, which is to strongly encourage the use of the composting program at the Solid Waste Center to reduce the amount of food waste being buried in the landfill and research the potential for contracting with a solid waste hauler to initiate a program of curbside composting within the planning area. And, you know, this was in response to comments about the fact that, you know, we have this great resource, and maybe we're not using it to its full capacity, and, and let's direct people to do so. So that's pretty much the end of the changes. Next, we'll jump to the future land use map, and we will talk about that. And I'll go over the categories so you can see the pattern, the future land use pattern, and we'll look at the, the future land use categories and see if anybody has any comments regarding that. And then Ellen will go over the, the zoning map. So I'm going to switch here quickly to the future land use map, which is here. Can everybody see that?
Can you make it a little bit bigger, Tim?
Yes, give me a second here. Let me and I can zoom in to any area as well. So this is a pretty simple future land use map, and I'll start here with these outliers. This is the, these are those three lots that are surrounded by the town of Snowmass Village, and they're identified as L D R. And L D R is the, I think it's ten to thirty acres. Let me pull up a document here. You won't be able to see it right now, but we'll get to it in a second. Yeah, that's ten acres to less than or equal to thirty acres for density, and then, you know, it's a pretty standard residential category. Then we have conservation, or excuse me, then we have the, the public designation for the Solid Waste Center, and we have the public designation for the sheriff's radio repeater station, and we have a very small area, and let me just pull this in for you. A very small area of public here, which is the underpass and the related commuter trail that serves the Brush Creek Highway eighty-two intersection and the park and ride facility. So then we have the conservation category, which is really intended like a catch-all category for publicly owned lands, including lands owned by Pittkin County, city of Aspen, U S Forest Service B L M. There isn't any B L M or Forest Service lands within this planning area, so it's really mostly city and county. And this includes most of the, of the Sky Mountain Park, and then it also includes the Aspen Mass lands over here. It includes the Mills property, which is the open space, which is owned by, remember, the open, the Mills is owned by the city or the county. I think it's the county. And then the And then the north half of the Cozy Point Ranch. And the reason that we showed the north half in this conservation category is if you look at the the aerial, there's a field right here below the, the, actually zoom in here. There's a field right here below this, below this Cougar Creek drainage. And then above that, it's pretty pretty unmanaged area and is, you know, wildlife habitat, et cetera. So we felt like it was appropriate to show that portion as conservation and the south portion as agriculture, which is where most of the facilities associated with the current cities' uses and the vendors' uses are located on this half. I will point out that the conservation category allows recreation, and we are contemplating adding and agriculture. Because the city, as I understand it, and John will address this when he does his comments, has plans for an archery facility, I think, north of Juniper Hill Road, which runs through here. And they already have, I think it's a hay field or alfalfa. So those are things that he may have concerns about whether or not this would adequately address. But I think it's going to be fine based on the language in the, for this, for the description of this category. And then most of the rest of the area is this low density residential large lot, which is 30 to 70 acres in size and has, you know, the standard residential uses. And that includes this parcel that was acquired by Pitten County. It was an out parcel from the Cougar Canyon. And then lastly, we have the, the Brush Creek Village subdivision. And that is being shown here as MDR, which is a one acre to five acre density. And the intent here is to kind of provide a guide for rezoning to try and come up with a zone district that works for this area to sort of relieve the nonconforming, you know, lot size issue for, for those guys. So that is the future land use map. I'm just going to switch to the, to the future land use categories. I'm not going to read them all, but I want to show you that they correlate. So just let me do this quickly. And they are here. So let me just zoom out here. Can everybody see that? It's a little hard, isn't it? But these are the, the, the future land use categories. I read from some of them, this medium density, low density, low density, large lot. And you can read these descriptions, but they include, you know, residential use at a particular density. So the density is identified in all the residential categories. And then other intended uses like caretaker dwelling units or home occupations. Or, you know, in some cases, other, you know, less impact of uses. And then this is the description for the agricultural use, which you'll see here. It's intended for agricultural uses and other uses governed by existing conservation easement or management plans. So that would cover the city's use of the lower half of the Cozy Point Ranch. And then this is the conservation description, and it's longer because it includes language related to the Forest Service and BLM. The reason we didn't take this language out because there isn't Forest Service or BLM land in this area is because we're thinking that this category is going to be used elsewhere in the county. And so we wanted to leave that language in, and it doesn't hurt to keep it in because we've also identified that, that it includes city and county owned lands and their management plans. The one change that L and I talked about including here was to add in this sentence, use of the land within this category will include recreation and agriculture as existing and permitted in the applicable city or county management plan. So that should go some distance to address Jeffrey's concern, and he can share with you his thoughts about that when he, when he does his comments. And then the last two, of course, are public. And we added this transportation hub category. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that when I was going over the map. Just to sort of specifically address the park and ride so that it was clear that it wasn't intended for other kinds of public uses, but it's specifically intended for transit oriented uses so that we don't get into a gray area about whether or not, you know, other public uses could end up on that piece of ground. So that's that. And now I'm going to switch to, switch to the zoning map so that L can discuss that. And Tom, I see your hand up. We're going to continue with, with Tim's presentation. We're going to go to Commissioner, sort of clarifying comments, and we'll come back to the Metro District. But I see you have your hand up.
And Tim, could you make that a little bit bigger? Is it possible?
Yes, let me do this. I'm just going to look at the map, actual map portion. Is that better?
That is better. Can everybody see that pretty well? Or, yeah, okay.
So, sorry, there is a sliding scale down there at the bottom, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah. There we go.
Great. That's, that's, that, that helps. Thank you. So so we do have statements in the, in the draft policy plan that speak to the need to rezone, to rezone some of, some of the properties in the planning area. And it was requested that we actually identify those areas and some potential zone changes on a map. So here's the map. And really, the intent of changing zoning here was to most of the changes focus in on the existing AR 10 zone district, which allows one dwelling unit for 10 acres. And in this, in order to preserve rural character here and throughout the county, it's, it's, it's been determined that, that, that AR 10 zoning probably isn't appropriate. And so there were some, there are a few areas here on this, on this map in this planning area that were zoned, are zoned AR 10. And one of them is, Tim, I don't know if you want to use your cursor to show the Pioneer Springs Ranch, which is a subdivision there. There, it's currently zoned AR 10. Most of the properties are 30, I think they are all 30 or more acres in size. And so there is a potential to divide those, to subdivide those into 10, 10 acre lots. And, and that really wouldn't be in keeping with the direction to, to keep the rural residential character. So recommended that, that, that piece be zoned RS 30 in lieu of the AR 10. And, and then there are a couple of other parcels that, that we've got, we've got RS 30 on the, I think that's on the, sorry, Tim, is that, well, we've got RS 20.
Are you, are you here, L?
Yeah. And is that RS, we have that, yeah, we have that at RS 30. So there again, we're not trying to create, create any nonconformities by, by changing the zoning. So we're there, that's 30 plus acre so, so we're just recommending that that is zoned AR 10 today, and that, that also could go to an RS 30 subdivision to, to preclude subdivision into smaller parcels. And the RS 30 zoning on the, on the parcel above near Wildcat. Again, we're not creating any noncon, sorry. I'm, I'm looking at the, near the Wildcat reservoir, that, that out parcel.
Oh, here.
Yeah. So that, that parcel, again, we're not creating any nonconformities by changing zoning. We're really just trying to zone it as it, as it lies on the ground today, rather than allowing for, for further subdivision. And then the, the piece that, that Tim had his cursor on earlier, that RS 30, the small RS 30 just above the new, the Brush Creek Village subdivision, the small piece. And that one, right? So that is, is a parcel that was owned by, that, that was given to the county as part of the Wildcat subdivision. And it is recently, it is zoned AR 10. But it, it is limited to one development only. So changing the zoning reflect what we want to see there isn't really going to impact anything other than to be sure that, that it won't be subdivided in the future. And I think that, let's see, AR 10, we have a couple of AR 10 parcels that we left. AR 10 across a highway. Yeah, Sand, the Sandatin parcel, Sandatin parcel there. Those are parcels in the vicinity of 10 acres in size. And we didn't want, we didn't want to create a nonconformity by downzoning them to a, to a larger acreage category. So those we just, we left at AR 10. And the resource government zone district is one that's on the books. It's intended to preserve conserved areas, open space areas in the ownership of, of local, local state or federal agencies. Those are in the dark green. And so really, the intent there is to make sure that they aren't, they don't come out of a conservation easement through sale or, or other means and get developed for purposes other than preservation of the conservation resources that, that they're conserved for. So I think that covers everything except the landfill, which is at the very top of, of the map in blue zone public because, well, because it's a public facility. So the last is, is the new district that we've identified on the Brush Creek Village subdivision. And as, as Tim said, those are most, those are one and to two plus acre parcels and a few that are a little bit larger than that. And the Metro District, and I think the Land Owners Association have requested that they are zoned AR 10 now, and they've requested that we really address the the nonconforming situation that they're in as, as a result of that zoning. And we don't know what the new zone district will look like. We'll, we'll have to probably develop a new zone district specific to that subdivision to accommodate that specific need. It may be an AR 2 zone district, but which exists, it's on the books, but
But it's not allowed within the, the route.
But it's not, but it's not allowed outside of the urban growth boundary. So anyway, we will need to develop a district that works there. At least look at it and see if it makes sense to change zoning. I don't want to predetermine the outcome of that, of that review and, and public hearing process. But that's what, that's, those are the changes that we've recommended. And happy to take questions. I think that's all we've got.
Quick addition, add, added item L. It occurs to me that would make sense, and I don't think we've done this, to add just a very brief paragraph in the plan to talk about the intent for this zone district to provide some guidance for when you actually go to develop it.
Yeah, I think that, that's a good idea.
And just for, I, I'm going to do something quick here. See if I can, see if I can show both the existing and the future zoning side by side so you can, so you can get a sense. So that's that one. And that's, I don't, can I do that? Bonnie, do you know if I can do that?
Are you side by side pictures of maps?
Yeah, I mean, side by side screens or documents?
Yes. Yes. So if you take one of your documents and drag it to the side of your screen, it'll split your screen in half.
Oh, I see.
Yep. And then show you the other one.
Well, I'm in the, I'm in the share section. And I can see both documents, but I can't click on them both.
No, you'll only be able to share one.
Oh, wait, I did, I can do it. I think I did it. Can you see both of them now?
Yes, they're very tiny, but we
They're going to be small, but it's really just about seeing the color differences. So you can see this, this is the existing zoning here. And you can see this amber is the, is the LIR 35 district. This green is the AR 10, which is pretty much this whole area. And this is RS 30, RS 30, RS 20 on the, on the Mills property and the park and ride lot, and then public on the, on the solid waste facility. So you can see the sort of the changes contemplated. Okay?
Yep, that's helpful. Thank you.
Should I keep any of these up for your discussion, or should I just stop my share?
Stop, stop share would be great. So this way Tom can follow along as well. Appreciate it. So at this point, I know Tom Newland has his hand up. I'm going to come back to you because we will open a public comment, but before I go to public comment, I will go to you and I'll go to John Spees as well. But Suzanne, Monte, Chelsea, or Jasmine, do you have questions for Ellen or Tim? And I also want to recognize, I know that Joe Wells joined us partway through the presentation. So he would like to address planning and zoning at some point, but it will be likely after the Metro District, sorry, the, the caucus plan adoption resolution. So hands from planning and zoning is what I'm looking for. Or unmute. So Suzanne Castkey. But you've got it unmuted too.
I don't want this to lead to another hour of discussion. It's just, it's just just one question. We don't have to go into ownership between city and county and all of that. But how much input to the Brush Creek Master Plan did the Farm Collaborative have? Matt, would you like me to respond?
Ellen, that'd be wonderful. And just, just to partly answer Suzanne Castkey's, the staff did this really crafty thing where they put all of the public comments in a single Sergey Brin drive. And so there were actually about a half dozen comments. In addition to the Brush Creek Metro District, there were actually six of the letters, or five of the letters that were on the Sergey Brin, whatever it is, Google Drive. So I don't know if you caught those.
I, I don't understand what you just said, Tim. But, but can you answer the question of how, how much, I mean, did they, did they say anything or did they attend?
Why don't, why don't I try to respond? I can tell you Suzanne, that we referred the, the existing conditions report and the, and the policy, the master plan to the City of Aspen. And to the long range planner, and then to John Spees, who is the, let's see, is, well, he's with Open Space and Parks. And he is the, gosh, I'm sorry, John, not to have your title handy. He is the Open Space and Natural Resources Manager. And so he, he, the, he provided comments on the plan and the existing conditions report that were specific to the Cozy Point Ranch in general. And I, I, so we didn't hear directly from Ed and Vardy, who is the Farm Collaborative Director, I believe. But we did hear absolutely try to bring the, the city into the conversation. And John, John does have some comments to offer.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Chelsea, Monte, or Jasmine, additional questions for Ellen or Tim?
Probably similar to Suzanne. So Chelsea, Monte, or Jasmine?
I have no questions.
Jasmine or Chelsea?
No, I have no questions.
A couple before I turn it back over to Tom and John. The, did we clarify that the house size cap was due to 13D water regulations, i.e. that the two inch pipe serving the, the Brush Creek Metro District was insufficient? But for example, could a house get around it by storing your own water and then providing fire protection? So it's, I guess, a fairly detailed question, but it seems like that was missing in terms of the logic for the 5750 was due to 13D water regs and sprinklers. I didn't see that mentioned anywhere in the plan. I heard it from the Metro District. I heard it from the metro district. I didn't see it in the plan. And a couple others regarding the EOTPC vending is an existing use. I they distribute newspapers every day, so that doesn't seem like it would need to be an addition. They've been doing, you know, vending has been a a use. Existing, if you will, park and ride. Some other things that just seem dotting eyes, mobile homes aren't existing in approved use. And that was in Ed and Vardy. It wasn't through an L and E, it was through a land use code text change amendment. And the logic from Eden and other farmers in the valley was that they wanted to be able to adjust irrigation. And the most efficient manner would be living on the site. Planning and zoning at the time was concerned both about poop and propane, which would be either OWTS or propane tanks. But again, that was code land use code that we adopted in the county that approved mobile homes. Again, back to traffic, I thought we had a tunnel study. That was approved as part of the L and E for the seven thousand square foot salad bar. So it still seems like we're pushing fingers back and forth at who's responsible for the traffic study. But I thought we'd been through this with numerous folks within both the city, the county, the metro district and the farm collaborative. I thought that language was agreed at the L and E for the salad bar. There's no mention anywhere in the metro district about noise. And at some point, the. The decibel level again, and this doesn't have to be tonight, the decibel level for for human beings is beyond what we should be. Permitting buildings. And so it's great that we have park and rides and solar panels underneath light paths, but we probably don't need schools. And I think that's probably a further investigation or we'll end up in the next location extent having the same conversation. And I think that one's a serious one, especially as we look at schools and other community uses at the edge of the parking ride. It's all have as far as clarifying comments. And any other commissioner clarifying comments for Ellen or Tim? Tom Newland, I know you've had your hand up for a while. Did you want to comment before I turn over to John Spees or Joe Wells? Sorry, did you want to respond to any of those? Sorry.
Yeah, just briefly. You're right, we did not add that the recommendation for this, for the fifty seven fifty house size cap. Was based on on water capacity and limitations. And I think that that is, we can add that as as as. As a clarifying statement, if you think that's appropriate. I think John Spees will speak to the the. Temporary farm worker housing topic that you raised. And also, he may want to speak to the tunnel study that was done or Tom may, Tom actually may want to speak to that study. Which we have actually posted on, it will be a part of the appendices to the plan. And then, yeah, maybe you can help us if you have some language regarding, if you want to add language regarding. Some sort of prohibition or limitation on schools, given the potential noise decibels. Associated with the airport in the area, we can add some language to that effect. And and I'll leave it at that.
Excellent. Thank you. Suzanne Cast.
Jeffrey, I've heard you numerous times mention salad bar. And I don't know if that's meant to be a joke or criticism or something that other people understand. But that happened before I came on to P and Z.
So planning and zoning through location extent approved a seven thousand square foot. Salad, a building that would be for teaching salad.
I don't, I'm sorry, say that again, for teaching what?
Maybe John Spees could speak to it. The the farm collaborative has an approved seven thousand square foot, one story underground, one story above ground, thirty five hundred square feet. That would be a a teaching facility. They are the least C. From the city for that development that was approved through location extent. And then across the street, David Peschnecheck has a an approved through location extent, twenty eight foot tall bathroom. So those are the two approved facilities along Highway eighty two by Juniper Hill.
So were you on P and Z when the seven thousand square foot teaching facility was approved?
Yes, the teaching facility, yes.
And did you, did you vote against it? I assume you did.
So the the size and scale is commensurate with the zone district. And that was the argument by the city planners.
And and so, but P and Z approved it.
P and Z approved that the the teaching facility for the farm collaborative, the least C from the city from John.
And so you were you, so was it city P and Z that looked at that or county P and Z?
It's at Cozy Point, so it was county P and Z through location extent.
And so did you vote against it?
I voted in favor of the salad bar. It 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 meets the requirements of the land use code within that zone district. The, again, the reason why we're here tonight is that there's two properties that the approvals go through location extent. So the answer is it is both consistent with the two thousand and three master plan, which we're currently updating. And it's consistent with land use code. So.
And so, so I still don't understand, why do you call it a salad bar?
As a vegetarian, it is for the teaching of vegetables. I don't know what else to call it. I'm sure Ed and will come up with better marketing phrase. It's not really my building to to name a moniker for.
Well, I I think that was, anyway, I I think it was described in this master plan. As a way to teach children about agriculture and better soil practices and such. But you voted for it because the land use code covered it.
So location extent is, does it meet the the master plan of two thousand and three brush creek district? And yes, it does.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments for either Ellen or Tim?
I think Suzanne makes a good point that we probably shouldn't use slang. And we should be more precise in our references to previous land use approvals for the record. So that, and I actually, I appreciate Suzanne asking the question. Fair, fair point.
Any other clarifying questions or comments related to the updates to the master plan? John Spees, the table's all yours. I'm I'm not allowed to say farm to table, that would be just.
Hi, can you guys hear me, first of all?
We can, thanks, John.
Okay, well, thank you, Ellen and Tim and members of the commission. Appreciate the process that you guys have gone through here. And as a representative for the city and our leaseholders, I just had a few, few comments. That I would like to put on the table. And Ellen, I don't know if the best way to go through this, you had talked about having the document up. We could do it that way.
Yeah, um, Tim, I I think that might be the easiest way to do it so that people know. Uh, what sections were referred to. Tim, are you okay with just, yeah, thanks?
And Tim, the first spot I'm looking at is under section one point two objectives. So, so our comment or our concern here is the inclusion of preclude all public uses. We would ask the commission to remove public from this descriptor. The reason being is that Cozy Point Ranch is an open space. It was bought with public funds and it is intended for public use. And so I think precluding all public uses. Really works against what an open space is established for and what the intent of the purchase in management plan of that property is. So just something that I'd like the commission to consider removing public from that sentence there. Uh, should I go on to the next one, Ellen?
Uh, Jeffrey, I'll, I'll, I'll ask you how you'd like to to move forward. Would you prefer to discuss each of these as as they're raised? Or would you prefer to have John go through his comments and come back?
I'd I'd say similar to the way we work with with you and Tim, let, let, let John go through uninterrupted and we can come back to each of them.
Okay, great. Then we are going to jump down to action item three. In section one point five affordable housing. This, this is more of a comment. The way that, the way that this is written, it discourages permanent or temporary affordable housing. Out of the, outside of the established urban growth boundaries. And we understand that that's written, but I think there's a little, that there's some nuance that's missed there. And it's that housing. Housing for. Employees is not encouraged, except to provide job related onsite housing. And I think that the nuance there is particularly important when considering Cozy Point Ranch with the agricultural operations. And Jeffrey, you actually noted this in one of your comments. I think the nature of agricultural work does necessitate having employees onsite. And both in a permanence, which exists currently at the Cozy Point Ranch. And in the temporary way that Ed and Vardy has pursued over the past two summers. And I think that really supports that agricultural goal that's identified by Peking County. As important to the rural character of this area. And, you know, agricultural operations necessitate having onsite employees in housing. And so I just, I want to make that note. And, you know, I just questioned this idea of discouraging permanent or temporary housing. And then one other final note is I'd say that the, that the county does have an ordinance in place. That allows for temporary housing as it's related to agricultural practices. And that was an amendment to the code that went through, I think is zero one four twenty twenty. And so I just note that as well and wonder if this is in. This is in a little bit of conflict with that amendment that was adopted by Peking County. Moving on, I'd like to go to. Sorry, section one point six, action item number three. This is in agriculture. So this, the way this is written, it encourages the city of Aspen to conduct a master plan process for the Cozy Point Ranch, which includes broad public outreach. Before and proceeding with plans for improvements and expansion in the existing uses at the ranch. I would argue that the city has gone through this process. In two thousand seventeen, the city went through a management plan process for Cozy Point Ranch. And for those who are not familiar, that is the typical pathway that we would pursue for an open space parcel. And that management plan in particular did have a very broad public outreach process, including forty five meetings. Hundreds of people, or I should say over a hundred people that attended the public meetings as well as public comment that was submitted. To to the parks department in other, by other means. And so I just, I, I've seen this appear in several documents that this was not. A public outreach process. And I would just encourage those of you who have not reviewed the two thousand seventeen management plan document. To go back and to take a look at it and and really see the robust outreach process that did take place. And the management plan for our open spaces, and I believe this is true in the county as well, becomes our guiding document. And those are reviewed every ten years. So the next time that that would come up for review would be two thousand seventeen. That's just a comment on that. I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about the master plan process versus the management plan. That was adopted. By city council in two thousand seventeen and in the broad public outreach that happened there. All right, moving on. Couple more comments here. See, we're all the way down to two point five. This is water quality. This is action, action item number five. And I apologize, Tim, but I might have you jump back. We would ask that the commission use the same language that you used in agricultural section. One point six, item four, where you encourage efficient use of water by irrigators rather than require. So you encourage the implementation of smart irrigation. And the reason that I that I bring this up is the city is very interested in water conservation. And best practices associated with the irrigation of the fields at Cozy Point. Particularly for the hay production. But recognize that we are in the process of slowly turning over that system and moving it towards more efficient means. And so we'd like to change that word from required to encourage. And that would be as as we are able and as we are. Both by, both financially able and as we are able programmatically to switch that over. Just as a side note, we've started to switch some of these systems over to K line, which is a, which is far more efficient. But it's a long, ongoing process with, as some of you may understand, some significant expenses that be incurred. So that would be our request for that number five would be changed from required to encourage. And then. Promise I don't have too many more. Now we are at number, section three point two, action item seven.
You know what page that's on, Jeffrey? Never mind about it.
As I have it on thirty five, but I'm working off of the April twelfth edition. Yep. So in this instance, we would ask the commission to use similar language to the approval that they used. During Ed and Barti's process. This was, and I quote, create plans for infrastructure enhancements to support pedestrian bicycle safety. And connectivity, including considering solutions for improved bicycle pedestrian safety and connectivity to brush park. Brush Creek Park and Ride. So in this sense, it's a planning for safe, direct and functional transit. Bike pedestrian access to Cozy Point Ranch. And that would just mirror the language that you all used in resolution one dash two zero two one. From early last year. Oh, finally. Want to talk just a little bit about the map and the land use descriptions.
The future land use?
Yes, yes, please. Yes, yes, please.
Wait, um, I mean, I could do both of them at the same time, Jeffrey, but they're gonna be awfully small.
I, I only need is the future one. Well, actually, no, I will need the descriptions too.
Okay, let me uh, let me try uh, to see if we can see them both. I think it's gonna be a little difficult, but let's try it.
While you're getting that going, um. Tim, I. I, I say in, in general, th- these seem fine to us. There is some concern about having two different descriptions of this on one piece of property. And in particular, when I'm thinking of that northern zone, north of Juniper Hill. Um, we do have existing agricultural operations that happen there, uh, haying and composting. And then we also have an activity envelope for an existing archery range um, that's in that location. And so we just wanna make sure that that conservation description adequately. Reflects what's happening there. Oh, and one other note, there's also a, in a um, in existing trail. Uh, uh, equestrian trail that um, heads to the northern end of the property there. So there is agriculture, there is recreation happening on that parcel. Just wanna make sure that. Conservation is adequately captured.
So, so Jeffrey, can you see this um, language here for the conservation where we've added this and agriculture?
And then. One uh, one final point. Uh, and then, and then I promise I'll stop, um. On the, in the agricultural description, we're wondering if it is um. The last sentence is appropriate and. This is referring back to my earlier comments. Where you're discouraging permanent and temporary employee uh, housing. On what is an active agricultural um, parcel. And that would, I think it's just important to recognize that these jobs. As um, as cited in the, in the county documents, these are jobs. Related to the site and, you know, for the effective operation of, of agricultural. Endeavors, uh, whether it be the production of food or uh, the, the management of, of horses. You really do need to have um, both permanent residence and temporary employee housing on the site. And so I find it, I find it interesting that it was included um. As the last sentence, I'm not sure it's necessary. And I, I would say that it's sort of uh, directly in conflict with. With the, what we're trying to accomplish there and, and how to accomplish agricultural activities. And that's it for me.
So, John, thank you so much for that feedback. Uh, Ellen and Tim, how do you wanna get through it at, at this point? What's the best way to address it? Do you wanna go bottom up? Do you want commissioner clarifying questions for, for John?
Um, I would, I would suggest since we have, since we've got these documents on the screen that. Perhaps we start here. Uh, and.
So bottom up as John presented?
Yeah, yeah, that sense and um. I think we can start and I'll, Tim may wanna jump in here, but on the description of the conservation. Future land use, as, as a future land use, um, I asked this after having spoken with John. And it actually does accommodate or uh, um, recreational uses. So the archery range um, which exists um, in that northern. Uh, portion of the Cozy Point Ranch property um, would be accommodated um, under this conservation category. And as Tim noted, uh, if we add and agriculture as, as um. As a use within conservation, uh, then. I think that John's concerns about that northern piece are addressed. And the reason we put that piece in conservation as opposed to um, ag was because. Tim's assessment of the property, the physical features of the property and. Uh, resources on the property were that those areas outside of the archery range and the, the hay. Production field and the composting area really had a lot of wildlife, you know, the, due to the topography, the terrain. Um, had a lot of wildlife um, habitat re- resource. Um, in, as, as a component, so it made sense to make it a conservation piece, but I think that. We can accommodate, um, given the description of the use, we can accommodate the existing. Uh, uses that John has described, including recreation, the trail, uh, the archery range. And then the agricultural uh, aspects. So I. That's my response. I don't know if Tim wants to add anything or if John has any.
The only thing that I would add is that, I mean, there, we do have the option of. You know, adjusting the boundary between the two. To incorporate the hayfield, the composting. I think the hayfield is here, right, John? And the composting is like right on the other side of the, of the drainage?
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. And then the, the only other piece I, I would add there is that. Historically, there had been some hay that had occurred to the north of the um. North of the archery range. And you know, we, that, our intent is not necessarily to, to begin hanging that again, but I would hate for this to. Preclude that, um, if it did become feasible in the future. Just, just hearkening back to the historic use that happened up there.
So again, my comment would be, you know, we could adjust that boundary to incorporate those areas right here. Or we could just say that the language in the description which says. Uses of the land within this category will include recreation, the archery range and agriculture. Any hay. And then in the parentheses, and John, maybe you can comment on this, as existing. So the hayfield clearly is existing and the archery range is gonna be new, right, as I understand it?
Existing.
It's existing already?
Existing, yeah, you drive.
Okay. Um, so as existing and permitted in the applicable city or county management plan. So to me, that seems like it covers it either way.
Although I don't think the agricultural designation would cover the arch, the recreational use, so. Whereas the conservation uh.
Right.
Future does.
So it sounds like we've addressed John's questions or criticisms. And John, do we satisfy future use in your mind from what's up on the screen?
Yes, I think that's, yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right, so we'll switch back to the document then.
What, can we address the agriculture?
Oh, right.
So I, so let me just, uh, I'm not, this is, there's no editorial as someone's described, but um. I think the precedent here and what this body. Uh, approved as John pointed out in two thousand and twenty-one was. We unders, we, we planning and zoning and someone else can chime in. Uh, understood that there were needs for ag and for. Recreation and for horses that would require um, onsite. And you know, that the logic was that we didn't want someone driving from Carbondale to Cozy Point to turn off a sprinkler head. And that only someone onsite would understand if we were about to flood a field or there was a storm coming in, we didn't have smart irrigation. But that was the logic. If someone else at planning and zoning wants to chime in, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, other commissioners could. But our view was that we, we actually firmly debated at the time that we weren't in love with the idea of. Um, mobile homes, um, whether they're as beautiful as an airstream, that um, that was not really the way to accommodate. Uh, temporary seasonal worker, but that um, but we understood the, we understood the need on, onsite for. Um, immediate attention to fields or, or um, for animals. And again, someone else who's serving on planning zoning may have additional feedback on that.
And, and if not, I'll jump in.
Ellen.
I was just gonna say that John's recommend, recommendation for a change that would. Ex, make an exception for job-related onsite housing for agricultural operations. Seems like a reasonable um, amendment to that language to me. And, and we'd have to change it in the text of the plan as well, obviously.
So other commissioner feedback on Ellen's change.
Yeah, I remember that debate as well, Jeffrey, and coming to the conclusion that you articulated, so. I, I think we should be consistent and Ellen makes a good suggestion, so. I'm not opposed to it and I'm glad that um, John pointed it out.
Monty, you have your hand up. And Tom Newland, I know you have your hand up and I'm, I promise I will not forget. Um, Monty.
Yeah, yeah, I, I remember that too, going through the temporary housing and I think that, you know, we were giving them a couple of years to see how it works out. They, I think came into what requirements we wanted for about the propane and everything, so I don't think we should change that at this point either.
So, Tom Newland, is your hand up relative to John's? John species comments, or do you wanna come back to Tom Newland? I'm sorry, you can't see me on screen. I apologize because we have the other screen up. Tom, we're gonna come back to you, I promise. Are we on page? So we've covered page, are we going back to page thirty-five? Or it's basically related, which is the job related? Ellen?
Actually, um, I think, I think it makes, I think we can make that change. I don't think we have to uh.
We're good.
But I thought that the last. Uh, well, we probably should go, go look at that language, but I thought the last, the comment prior to the future land use map was about. Was relating to uh, the safe, effective bike and pedestrian.
Before the management plan with regards to the pathway, John already had the wa- water quality. And the question, he had the water quality question, and it's sort of a question for Suzanne Caskey. Would she be comfortable with? A best practices, um, encourage versus require? Did I get that wrong, Ellen?
No, we can go, well, let's, perhaps let's get the text back on the screen then, so that we can um.
Before we do that, could I make a comment? Um, Jeffrey, I think that you asked whether or not Tom's comment was related to this question of. Uh, employee housing on the Cozy Point property or in association with the agriculture description. Did he indicate that it's not?
No, again, I think because we do not have voices or pictures up on screen, Tom doesn't know that I'm recognizing him.
Because I suspect, is Rick still with us?
No.
Okay. He's still on the call.
Yeah, his phone is still there.
So at any point, Tom or Rick, if you wanna chime in, we're available for you and apologies that we're not in full. Rick, you're back?
Yeah, I'm back. I, um, I'm sorry, my, I'm on my phone and it's, it just gave me the warning that it's gonna die. Um, a lot of information here tonight that uh. I guess, you know, our anticipation was we would see comments. Prior to the meeting from anybody who was gonna be in the meeting. So um, can't really, a lot, lots of digest. I don't think there's anything that can't be discussed and agreed to, but I think uh, we've got a little work to do, it sounds like. We really wanna emphasize the issue of Juniper Hill and, and the intersection of eighty-two and the traffic studies and all that stuff, so. Um, that's where we're, our main concern, I think. And some of the old, older agreements.
Rick, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
In our past discussions, I, I feel like you have, you guys have expressed a concern about the scale. Of housing on the Cozy Point Ranch. Is that correct?
Well, our infrastructure, again, you know, going back to roads, water and so on, you know, we've been asked to provide water to uh. Outside of district boundaries, which we can't do. I think that's a, one of those things that needs to be resolved before things are, that get approved. Because then, you know, they're approved and then, you know, they need water and then where are we? Um, same with the traffic counts and stuff and that data, that baseline data. Uh, and that's kinda where we're at. Um, I don't think any of this stuff. It's insurmountable, but we just wanna make sure that everybody understands what our limits are.
Okay, so based on that, Jeffrey, I would just suggest or ask the question of whether or not planning commission members would be interested. I understand that, that you wanna allow because you've had uh, past discussions regarding. Permanent and temporary employee housing on agricultural parcels. But I wonder if there is something that should be added with respect to scale. Like small scale or some limited number of units or something like that, just as a, a point of discussion to give Ellen I direction when we depart. Um, this evening.
And, and again, I'll, I'll open it to other commissioners, provide feedback to him, but in our, in our prior conversations that included the city. Through location extent, the goal was that the housing was for people that were working at. Cozy Point. It was not to be uh, a, a site, for example, for affordable housing for people to commute to the city. The conversation with Ed and Lee C and his team was really the concern about. Irrigation or horses or something that required immediate attention that someone working or living an hour away. You know, it, it's, they're very consistent with that. That was our understanding behind the approval. It was not to house someone who's then jumping on, you know, raft at park and ride, if you will.
Okay, so with that in mind, then I'll uh, uh, stop this share and switch back to the document so we can look at that language. Let's see here.
So, and I, I'd assume that's probably Rick's fear too, is that at some point the, the housing would. Would, would, um, the potential housing would be for folks that were outside of Cozy Point. So are we on page thirty-five? Or we've already covered that? Okay, cool. And John had language that he preferred in this area?
Yeah, he referred to reso oh one dash twenty twenty-one. There's some language in there, apparently a condition.
Do you need me to pull up that reso?
I don't have it, so.
To me, I don't have it either. To me, the language sounded um, sounded reasonable. Um, but John may wanna, do you have it, the specific, I think John did read the specific language.
I do, I do have it. And I'll, I'll read it to you. It's condition. Uh, number fourteen from that. Says prior to any new development or increase in use beyond the subject application, the applicant shall create plans for infrastructure enhancements. To support pedestrian bicycle safety and connectivity with existing trail networks, network in the area. These plans shall also consider solutions for improved pedestrian bicycle safety and connectivity of the Brush Creek Park and Ride. I think that, that's just the language that you all used um, in oh one twenty dash twenty-one or twenty twenty-one. And it seems like that would be uh, consistent with what you're, I, I think it's all headed in the same direction. I think this idea that uh, to require um, rather than to plan for is, is where I'm stuck.
Tim, Tim and Ellen, are you comfortable with that language potentially?
And then it seems fine to me. And if we could just have John email it to Ellen, uh, as long as planning commission members are comfortable with it, we can include it.
Or I can just, I can pull up the reso and, and, and get it.
So.
I'm fine with it.
Suzanne, Monty? Jasmine? Jasmine?
It's okay with me.
Excellent.
Yeah, okay with me too, Monty.
The least, I, I see that I'm in the minority, so I won't pursue this much, but. Uh, I think my, my thought about the, that use of the word require. Came from the very strong presentation that we got from um, Tom, Tom and Rick. But, but, but I can see how most of the group is going.
I can, I can tell you that. I can, I can tell you that we didn't have any language to this effect initially. And this was the language they recommended. I don't know to what, you know, requires certainly is a stronger, provides stronger direction, but I think, yeah.
I was gonna add to Suzanne Kaski, again, just having served on this board, I think for five years. Every time we discuss the intersection and the use of Cozy Point Ranch. And every time I drive that intersection, which is most days to get to the Park and Ride. It's a precarious intersection pretty much any time of day. And the, the fear through all of the LNEs, both for the EOTC as well as for as well as for, for Ed's project is it's we're making that intersection worse. So I think the, to side with Suzanne, or just at least to encourage Suzanne to take this further. There is a health safety risk at this intersection. And the big concern through our last LNE, and again, speaking as planning and zoning, other commissioners can chime in. Is that their concern with the sort of mounting problems at that intersection and a potential loss for life? Because that's continuing to get more use. And so, you know, the reason to side with Suzanne on this one would be require is we're worried about the health safety of people. That's kids that are boarding horses. That's people that are learning about vegetables. And that was the concern that we heard throughout Ed's presentation from the master plan. John, you want to comment?
My, my only comment is I think this is slightly different than the intersection question, which is, which was addressed in a different part of the plan. I can't remember exactly where, but I think this is more speaking to pedestrian access and bike and pedestrian access. And you know, we are actively pursuing, you know, safe, direct and functional transit bike and pedestrian access. It's, it's just, we, we realize that there are, it's, it's bigger than us, that there are probably more partners that we need to engage with in order to do this. And so that's why I would change that word from require to encourage the city. It is part of our plan. But I, but I think it's going to take a little time for us to, to execute this.
At this point, can I just do a quick straw poll with, with planning and zoning commissioners? That the straw poll is either leave the language as currently is red line on the screen, or B, A would be leave it the language as it is, or B, if Ellen has the resolution, we could look at that language. But the, I withdraw my criticism of, of the current because I think John addressed it, which is I, I was thinking about Juniper Hill and not about Cozy Point in general. This is regards to Cozy Point. So A would be we leave the red line in place. And B would be we use the same language that we use when Ed was in front of us in, in twenty-twenty-one. Chelsea?
I'm fine with using the, the previous language that we used prior with respect to this provision number seven and Cozy Point Ranch. It's fine.
Jasmine?
I'm okay with using the previous language.
Thank you. Monty?
Uh, previous language, yes.
Suzanne?
I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would, I would keep require in there. And I was about to ask of John, is there any chance that that saying require would help you move things along?
I'm not sure how to answer that question, Suzanne. It's something we're, we're actively interested in. But we have some, some challenges, as you guys know, and mainly it's, it's crossing Brush Creek Road. Because we have some good infrastructure in place to get from, to get under eighty-two and to get up the, up Brush Creek, but we don't have great infrastructure to cross eighty-two to get to the ranch or to cross Brush Creek and get to the ranch. And, and that's an ongoing conversation.
Okay, thank you.
So I think at this point, to keep, to keep moving, and I understand and, and truly appreciate Suzanne. Because we're about to move to another helping verb that, that we, for number seven, that we, that planning and zoning four to one had said yes to from a straw poll standpoint, using the language from twenty-twenty-one, RES, oh-one twenty-twenty-one. And so I think the next one is the water quality. Which again, is going to go back to helping verb Suzanne, which is again, a require versus encourage. And here again, I think the this should be in section two and a half. And I think John Spees's point was that they're already moving to K-line efficient. That they would, again, continue with the word encourage. PNZ happy, or sorry, happy is the wrong word. Is PNZ okay with the word encourage remaining? Which would be the city of Aspen or John Spees's preference? And Suzanne Kaski?
That, this was a spot where Tom Newland and Rick Stevens really impressed me with the, the state of things in, in the Brush Creek area. So I would vote for require, keeping require.
Okay. And John Spees, I don't think was on that call. I know he was invited. But John, the background on this one is that what is servicing the entire Brush Creek Metro District is a two-inch pipe. And that's informing a lot of the decisions because that's the gating factor for the whole neighborhood, for fire protection. And so that, that's the quick background without any editorial, I guess. And Ellen, you had some thoughts?
Yeah, just that, you know, the, the first sentence says require efficient use of water by irrigators, et cetera. And then it says in the, the text that's highlighted says, this could include implementation of smart irrigation, which includes the, the eliminating the use of overhead water irrigation. So I think that the requiring efficient use of water by irrigators is is, is a reasonable ask. And I'm just clarifying that, that the latter sentence is just saying this could include, so it's not requiring the, it's not requiring that overhead watering be precluded. It's just suggesting that there are, these are some methods that could be used to accomplish the initial direction. So it could stand as it is. I understand that, that John, that John would prefer to have a encourage introduction to that sentence. But I, I don't think that the elimination of the overhead irrigation is is a requirement based on the way that the sentence is drafted or the recommendation is drafted. Does that help? Does that make sense?
That makes sense to me, Ellen. I, I think my my concern is that if, how do you? How do you define efficient? And what, what happens if that's not met? Do those, you know, if we're, if we're not able to meet the, the efficient standard, are we then no longer allowed to irrigate those fields? And they you know, I just wonder what the sequence is there. And that, and that's what, that's what, that's what concerns me. And what, in my first review of this document, the comments I sent to you back in, in March. I had some language that was more like work with agricultural operators to establish efficient, efficient water use. You know, or to, to reach efficiency standards. Just recognizing that the complexity of the irrigation systems that, especially at Cozy Point Ranch and the production of hay are vast. And, you know, it's not a, it's not something we can do next year. I just want to, I just want to make sure that that's captured. And, and I guess I'd also note, I appreciate Jeffrey, that explanation. It makes total sense to me. That with the two-inch pipe in the metro district, I, I just say that this water is coming from a different, a different source. And ju- just as a note.
And so I guess the question would be, thank you, John. Is there a question for? Ellen, in some ways, this paragraph is for metro district, this is based on the metro district users and the gating factor of what the community is drawing on. And John's point is what I hear from my neighbors, we're all active irrigators with a dot matrix printout looking at, you know, this is what I have, this is what you have and and how we're going to get through the season. And I think, I, if I was sitting here with my, my polo and, and ag neighbors. They would, they would say the same thing that John just did, which is, you know, we don't want to show off that we're using water. We just need to make sure, you know, we, we can you know, cultivate this field. So is there a, is there a, are there two water paragraphs coming out of this? That one is really, I don't mean, you know, we have he has an allocation through his water rights. Is that separate from what you're seeing in this overall master plan?
Yeah, that was the first thing that I had thought of is it seems like we have two types of users. One is the homeowners in Brush Creek that rely on Brush Creek system. And the other one is other agricultural users who, who are using, you know, ditch rights, water rights, creek rights to, to do their irrigating. I, I could see us splitting this into two paragraphs if that made sense to others.
I, I think that makes sense. I think that makes really good sense.
So our next, so that was two, five, which is water quality. I think we have consensus unless there's any other commissioner comments regarding irrigation. Now we're moving up to one-six. Which is, I mean, I think the action in one-six was the, other than John saying, read the manual. Was that, was that, that, that he believes the planning exercise that's through, I think it was action item three. That, that, I think we're further up, sorry.
This is one-six, action item three. This is the one that where John made a point that, that they've done what they understand to be a master plan via the management plan process.
So other planning commissioners may have a question for you, John, but I guess the question is, when you come back in for location and extent, we're using this master plan and you're saying, well, we have this master plan, plus we have a management plan. And that is informing, I mean, the location and extent will be based on this master plan. But for your reading also, you should look back at our twenty-seventeen plan. But you planning and zoning, Pittin County, Colorado, through location extent really needs to rely on this master plan. So you're, I assume your advice planning and zoning is that you're comfortable with number three being struck from this, this document?
Yeah, and, and, and it's I just, I think there's been a misconception that a public process was not taken in establishing the goals at Cozy Point Ranch. And, and I would agree that there is not a master plan in terms of a, of a drawn document with a layout of buildings in and for the site. But I, but that's, that's separate from the, from was there a public outreach process? And so I just, I just want that to be clarified almost for the record.
Um, just chiming in here, I, I feel like this topic was explained to us three or four times in the last two workshops we've had on this also. And I'm pretty clear that the city did conduct a very extensive outreach process on it. I know that the Brush Creek Metropolitan District's letter asked for it too, but the staff has clarified multiple times for this commission that the city has conducted a very extensive process and I'm comfortable with it for the city's purposes. And so I'm, I would agree that we strike number three. As we move through John's comments.
I would agree with that.
I only have one clarifying question for Ellen and Tim. I'm comfortable striking it, but again, I'm worried about the health and safety at Juniper Hill and Highway eighty-two. I'm worried about and I'm, I guess I'm not allowed to use the term frauder because that would be a reference other than what it's like crossing the street there. But it's, I'm worried that it's a dangerous intersection and that we point fingers at meetings. And I, you know, John pointed out that there are a lot of entities that, that, you know, that it's, it's GR, it's, it's a state highway. But I, I remain concerned about the development at this area. And I remain concerned that we don't, we don't have a lot of say planning and zoning, but how do we, how do we monitor the health and safety of that intersection? Forgetting it, if it's the city or Lee C. or Brush Creek Metro District or the highway or GR or EOTC. There's a lot that goes on at that intersection. And you know, it will be developed over the next couple of years. And I still remain concerned about traffic and safety at that intersection. And I said it at, at Edens, and I thought Tuttle was the answer in terms of a, a study at that intersection. But if we're striking three, do we still have that concern listed?
I, I believe, and Tim can help me here. I think that if we don't already have language to that effect under the roads section of, of our master plan, we can, we can include it there.
We do have it. Let's go look at it. So you make sure you're comfortable with it. It's right, sorry. Okay, I think I just passed it. So there are several ways that it's, we've attempted to address it. This is one of them. This new language, which is talking about gathering the base data for future evaluation of that. This is another one where we say update analysis and traffic generation and impacts associated with Cozy Point Ranch as improvements such as housing are contemplated. Consider the impacts of health, safety and quality of life, et cetera, et cetera, in the vicinity of Brush Creek Road, Highway eighty-two intersection and the Juniper Hill Highway eighty-two intersection. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's another place that it's discussed, but those are at least two places. So where we've discussed that.
So any other commissioner comment or any dissent in terms of striking action item three on one point six? Jasmine or Monty? We only have, I think we have three, three or four more items from John's list. And I will give Tom and Rick opportunity. We're approaching ten to seven. I'd like to go past seven rather than a continuance. This is our third meeting. On this subject, it is a public hearing. It was publicly noticed in the Aspen Times. Any commissioner comments or questions regarding going past seven PM this evening?
I have a comment. In the two previous meetings, John, you were, you were absent. So why now with these comments? Or is it just because these are red lines that you, you're seeing for the first time? I'm just, just curious.
Yeah, it's it's a good question.
You were a topic of conversation at all the previous meetings and your, your, your absence was noted at those previous meetings. And I'm happy to take time to go line by line through your red lines, but I'm an attorney and I get red lines all the time and I read through them in twenty minutes. And then I make my decision. So why now? Why are this late in the game?
Sure, it's a fair question. And I apologize for missing the, the previous meeting. It was a, it's a bad time for myself and my family. And so I, I do apologize for that. I did provide comments in early March. And then, you know, but to be honest, most of these are a response to the red lines that I just recently received from the county. So apologies for the late notice. But a lot of these are in response to the changes from the Brush Creek Metro District.
I have a suggestion. What if we, what if we leave this part of it? This part of it. Uh, in in, and just add some, some more. Um, basic or general language that talks about. The dis- the, the concern about the safety of the intersection. And that future L and E reviews should pay particular attention to traffic impacts, et cetera, et cetera.
Um, you, I I would be pretty happy with that. Uh, again, I think that's a, um. That, and and John, John will agree that the issue when we have an L and E for Cozy Point is who's responsible, who's going to pay? And I'm concerned that even if we added four employee units. That, um. I I'm just concerned with that intersection and I, and it's, it's somebody who parks a brush tree parking ride and and drives by it every day. And I think it's, uh, there's the folks making the left to do the shortcut into Aspen to go the rural route into the city. Uh, and it's people trying to get out and enjoy their day. So it's, it's, it doesn't, it seems like it's a, it's an intersection that will get worse, not better. So I'd, I'd be comfortable leaving anything in that, that sort of protects everyone's health, safety at that intersection.
And so Jeffrey, wh- what did you think about what, uh, Tim Malloy just said about? Um. I I I assume, Tim, that you meant take out the first part of that. Box, but leave the last part in.
Right, and substitute the first part with some statement about. Future location and extent reviews or or and uh first an expression. That th- that there's a concern about health, safety at this intersection. And future L and E reviews should pay particular attention to traffic impacts and safety, et cetera, and then leave the that last part.
I could go with that, certainly.
Chelsea, Jasmine?
I think that would be fine.
Monty?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Same here, I'm, I'm fine. Um. Essentially, back to the other question, um. That I asked John earlier. I mean, we're essentially redlining back and forth competing in interest here where county interests. Um, or the Brush Creek ma- ma- Metropolitan District's interest to hold the city accountable. And as Jeffrey referenced, comes down to dollars, who's going to pay if the city or the county becomes accountable for improvements to this intersection? And we're, we're redlining by committee here, which is fine, but, um. Whoa. What's the right answer? What are we going to do with the next like hour? Are we going to just continue redlining and concede to the city what they don't want to do at this intersection? Or we're going to? Find a compromise and can the, the parties themselves, the city and the county compromise and reach, reach. An agreement without us having to arbitrarily say yes to some of what the city requests and no to what some of the counties recommended. And we go back and forth or or. What, what is the right approach here? Jeffrey, I mean. We're sort of pandering to what the cities come to us late in the game to ask for with respect to these red lines without like. I guess, or was there collaboration and we're just not being, um, you know, updated based on, on their collaboration?
And I'll, I will take a stab, which is, uh, again, there's, and and I don't know if I'm answering your question, Chelsea, but there's. Six comments that are included. But not included in the packet, which is, I think, also to Rick Stevens' chagrin, that the city basically, or the county. Changed the way they disseminated information, which was a way to disseminate information all the way up to the, the meeting, that if you didn't check the Gmail. Uh, or have a Gmail account. Um, you potentially didn't see those uh letters. And that's where. Um, even though the packet was eleven pages, there were also uh six comments, including the EOTC. Brush Creek Metro District, uh, you know, John, John does have a full document in there. So every party to this document did have. Uh, a document. I don't know if the planning and zoning commissioners knew that it was sitting in a, a Gmail box or something.
Hmm. I just don't like redlining at a meeting where we're supposed to adopt the master plan. I'm not cool with that and I don't like getting common. Like I, I could have read this before and understood that the dynamic between who wants to. Accept responsibility or shirk responsibility. So I just. I I would like to understand from the county staff whether they're comfortable with us making red lines on the day that we also are supposed to be reviewing. The, the resolution to adopt a master plan. Otherwise, I would say we continue it and we let the city and the county staff, you know, negotiate a amicable solution. And then we adopt the master plan at a continuance. Because I, redlining on the fly with Joe Craybacher missing is also, makes me a little uncomfortable. My.
Ellen and then Monty and Tom Newland.
Yeah, I would just. I would just, uh, add that. The comments that we have received, both from um internal uh county government. Uh, staff and external organizations have been. Most of them, with the exception, I'd say, of these uh comments tonight. Have been incorporated in the drafts, uh, as, as proposed changes and brought to you in previous meetings. So. Um, I think these. These comments, uh. Frankly, you know, the, the purpose of a public hearing is to have, to allow public. To come and make comments and um influence the, the plan. And I think if there were, if, if there are. Recommendations being made tonight that you're uncomfortable with, um, we can certainly continue the public hearing. I haven't heard. I'd like to hear, I think Tom Newland, um. Should weigh in on some of the changes that are being proposed, as many of them were recommended initially by the metro district, but. I haven't heard anything that makes me um uncomfortable at this point, but, but you are the planning commission and responsible for adopting the plan. So. Um, you know, it's really something you have to be comfortable with.
I've just popped in, uh, an alternate language based on my comment earlier so that people can actually see it and that might help.
Um. Thanks for your feedback, Ellen. I, I guess. Isn't the city a referral agency? So. I get, I get it, I get it that this is public comment period, and I'm, I'm definitely not suggesting that we don't take my public feedback. Um. In fact, we should have more public feedback and more opportunity for it. It's just, it's just the timing of making changes to a final proposed version. After much public comment and feedback over a series of months and other work sessions.
And, and yes. Sorry.
Go ahead, that's, that's all.
I was gonna say, yes, the city has been a referral agency. From the get-go and they have provided comments that, uh, to date have been, um. Incorporated in, in the plan. So with the exception of the comments. Um, that you're looking at tonight.
But we have like three more that John listed and we're gonna go through those and.
We have, we have two, one of which being major, one being minor that I, I count. One is. Affordable housing. Which. And again, both Tom Newland, again, um, Rick Stevens, um, can weigh in at the end. Joe Wells, I know, wants to, has joined us and and I think he has public comment. Um, but they. What's remaining, I think, is page twelve, which is affordable housing. And again, um, John's comments were, um. In relation to what, what this body has previously approved. Um, and the. I'll just, my, my characterization of housing on Cozy Point is that it is onsite job-related housing. Is what we, we agreed with, um, with Eden and, and again, I'm, I'm repeating myself. So if, if language that said a job-related onsite housing was included, would it, um? Would it, um? Placates the wrong word. Would it, would it, um? Would it remove the concerns, if you will, for lack of a better word at this hour, of, of the, um, metro district or of the? The, um, the caucus that, um. That this would be turned into an affordable housing site. Sorry to put it all out there.
Are, are you, Jeff, are you asking Rick and or Tom that question?
I, I think that's the, so, so Chelsea was asking, I, I think we have, we have two remaining issues. One is the affordable housing, which is page twelve. I think, um, and the other one was the comment about public use, public funds, which I think is the real quick one. Um, that, that John Spees, um, had, had raised. So. Um, do you want to take a quick break and see, try to go to Monty and or Tom and then come back to affordable housing?
Well, first, can we finish what, what we were talking about, uh, about that? Where Tim has just suggested. An alternative to, to three. Does that sound? Appropriate and?
Absolutely. You ready for a straw poll on number three? Suzanne Kaskis, you ready for a straw? Jasmine, Suzanne?
I, I didn't hear what Jasmine said.
Jasmine said she's okay with number three.
As it is, or the change that was, that Tim proposed?
Change.
Me too. I, I like the change.
Monty?
Sorry, you didn't know me. Uh, yeah, I think I'm fine with it. Uh, I, I think also this is running really long. And I think, you know, I personally get tired a little bit, you know? And I'm, I'm just wondering if this wouldn't be better continued and people work out the language a little bit better so we can just go through. It's, and read what we have and vote on it rather than just keep changing language. You know, that we have to kind of remember what we're saying and stuff. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking the continuance might be a better point, but that's me.
Yeah, I agree with Monty and that was sort of what I was suggesting earlier is that, uh. Uh, we have good, meaningful discussions when we, we talk about one issue, but when we're salt and peppered with one side's comments and then we. I, I don't like the approach, uh, of, of, of redlining before adoption. Um, uh, like this, where we're letting one side say something and then the other side come back. I mean, they should really be negotiating that themselves offline.
And it's not like this, this is a time-critical matter. It doesn't have to happen. I mean, this is something we want to get right. Especially for the Brush Creek people. And I think, you know, i- it's better for us to, rather than. Trying to change text all the time is just to be able to vote on something and, uh. And, and I'm not so sure that a continuance isn't right, really the right thing right now.
Ellen?
Jeffrey?
Suzanne?
Yeah, did you just call on Tom?
I called on Ellen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, um.
So Ellen, would this need to go back to the newspaper and, um, be publicly noticed again?
No, um, if you wish, um, you, you can continue the public. Hearing to a date certain and that date would be May third. Um. So if you continue to a date certain, you do not need to republish.
And would that be your advice?
Uh. Really up to you. It's if you don't want to, if you feel as though you're. Drafting changes on the fly and, and, and you're not comfortable with that, then, um. Then we can go ahead and continue. Um, I think that. Um. That's really up to you. I mean, ultimately, you're adopting this plan and need to be comfortable with it, but also, uh. Yeah, so if, if. I don't think we have much more to go through, but if you really feel as though you need more time to absorb the changes that have been discussed tonight, um, we, we can do that.
So my preference would be to get through, um, John's last point, which is the monkey in the room, which is affordable housing. But I'm hearing from, um. I, I got both Monty and Chelsea saying they're exhausted. Jasmine? Your thoughts on continuance versus hit the final point, which is affordable housing?
I think it would be helpful to have the entire thing. Uh. As close to what we want to adopt as possible, so that a, a future draft would incorporate some of the changes that we've had. But I agree with you that we should have a, at least more of a policy discussion about the. Affordable housing in agricultural area, just so that we make sure that we give the drafter of the new resolution. Um. What we're really trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I think, I think we should talk about it and then let everybody take all those notes and then redraft the language on it and then we vote on it. I don't mind taking a few more minutes and talking about, you know, portable housing. And so we all, we've got all of our comments out about the red line, but I just don't think we should vote on it tonight. Let them come back to us on May third and then we can vote on it without having to make a bunch of, you know. Uh, language change in, in, in the agreement.
So to Suzanne Kaskis' point, um, number three, are we, so I'm, so just so everyone's clear, it's seven oh seven P M. The goal is to finish off number three to discuss affordable housing with respect to, uh, John Spees's comments. We also have, who's been, uh, very generous with his time is Joe Wells, and I'd like to give him in this public hearing an opportunity to speak. Um, and then both Tom and, uh, Rick may have further comment at a continuation that would be on. Um, May third. So at this point, uh, just to, um. Monty, the, the question for you, just doing a, not a roll call vote, but just, you're okay with the changes to number three as drafted by Tim Malloy?
Yes.
Suzanne Kaski as drafted by Tim Malloy, number three?
Yes.
Uh, Chelsea?
Yes.
And Jasmine?
Yes.
So, uh, and Jeffrey is a yes. Our final piece of business was with regards to, uh.
And Jeffrey, Jeffrey, Tom Newland, he, he's still waiting.
But Tom, you're welcome to join us anytime. How about, we're gonna go to you before affordable housing?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate what Chelsea said, you know, there's a lot of changes going on here that. Um, it quite frankly, got a lot of the things that the Brush Creek, uh, homeowners or Brush Creek Metro District wanted put in. And, uh. You know, to go forward without. At least giving them some time to consider what the city has, uh, proposed and give some comment back, I think. Would be detrimental to the process and would really, um. You know, the, the Brush Creekers would see it as the city, here comes the city again at the eleventh hour, changing everything. Uh, not giving us a chance, uh, to talk. So I really encourage you to try to, uh, if you could, to delay this till May third, so at least, uh, the board has a chance to take a look at. At what the city wants changed and can be able to comment on it. Thank you.
Thanks. Monty, do you have your hand up?
No, sorry, no, I forgot to put it down.
Um. Tim, was there a specific direction needed in terms of affordable housing this evening? And the previous discussion again was around onsite. Um, temporary or permanent for, um. You know, for employment at Cozy Point, whether that's ag or horses.
Yeah, I think what I heard was Ellen, uh, came up with the phrase, job-related onsite housing is acceptable as well. And so.
It was job-related onsite housing for agriculture, uh, agr- operations specifically.
Uh, and I think in both cases, what we were talking about, the, the actual overriding action item was. An agricultural act, action item. So we can, we can add that language, but I think i- the intent wouldn't be lost either way.
But again, the, the intent is not to house, um. I'll, I'll just pick on Pitt County. The, the attempt is, is not to house two roots employees at Cozy Point. It's to house Cozy Point employees at Cozy Point. Because then it would, it would negate my argument. If you're onsite to worry about irrigation, then you should be, you know, in Pitt County open space and on, on that farm, not. Um, not at Cozy Point.
So we could. So we could provide some language to you for the next meeting that would include that. Comment as well, that the intent is not to provide, you know, uh, affordable housing for off-site users who would be commuters, et cetera.
And again, it's consistent with. And again, it's consistent with previous approvals by um planning and zoning. And, and again, Brush Creek was, um, Brush Creek Metro District was a referral agency on those location extent reviews, as well as the updates to the land use. You know, the code changes that we made vis a vis um temporary housing.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I'm not trying to revisit an old conversation, I, I'll, I'll stop there. Anything further this evening? Um, do we need to vote on a continuance before we open to, it is public, so it's public hearing. Joe Wells, you've been on the entire time. Wh- whether it's related to Cozy Point or not, I know Joe, you're on the line, um, you're welcome to unmute and join us.
Also, Jeffrey, I think you technically need to open the public hearing. Right?
So, so far, all we've heard from is the applicant and the metro district. Um, at this point, it is a public hearing. I am opening public comment. It sounds like Joe Well and Joseph, Joseph Wells and his dog is also online. Um, Joe, did you have anything on uh Brush Creek master plan?
Uh, no, Jeffrey, I was, I was actually trying to get on during the public comments period to talk about the Castle Creek situation, Castle Creek caucus situation. The only link I found was the YouTube link and uh Bonnie didn't know I was in the area. Uh, she sent me the Zoom link uh and I was able to get on. But I'll just take my issues up with Ellen and Cindy tomorrow and not take your time.
No, and apologies, um, Joe, uh, thanks for hanging out this whole time. Um, apology, Cindy uh was supposed to join us, but she's triple booked. She's meeting with the City of Aspen and the Board of County Commissioners in a four to seven meeting, so she is.
So I, I'm aware.
But I will, um, I will pass on to her that you've joined us regarding the Castle Creek. And do you have that proper link at this point?
Uh, I, I will just email both Cindy and Ellen and we can take up some inconsistencies that I found in the mass, the old master plan. Or the current master plan for Castle Creek.
Thank you, Joe, yeah, we will um definitely follow up with you tomorrow. Appreciate that.
And.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate your time. Um, Tom Newland or John Spees, any final comments before I call for a continuance to May third?
Um, wait, Jeffrey?
Sorry, it's for Tim.
Um, did, I'm so sorry. Did you address, just to be sure that we have the clear direction from the planning commission on the objective? John's comments on the objective for one point two, which is on the screen right, right now, which is to remove public. Um, from this, um, from this uh objective.
It, it would also be nice if, if we had the assistant county attorney on our call, but that would be wishful, thank you. Commissioner comments regarding um John Spees's uh striking the word public um from one point two one on page seven. And his comment was that it's public use and it would be public funds, so it should be public use, I think was his comment.
Um, I can, I can tell you that I did consult with the assistant county attorney on, on this specific language. He had no issue with it, um, you know, it's a recommendation in a master plan and um. So we, we can certainly invite him to uh come to the next meeting, but he, he has reviewed the language as it's drafted and, and. Um, did not take issue with it.
Commissioner comments regarding one two one and the inclusion of, inclusion or exclusion of the word public in the objectives?
I, I went with John's argument. Um, I, I can see someone asking the question of, is it consistent with the master plan? And if public is in there and it's a public use and it's publicly owned, I don't know where else you could go with it.
Yeah, I, I agree with Suzanne and I agree with John on that request as well, that I, I think as long as it's consistent with other definitions, it's fine if the word public's deleted there.
Uh, Jasmine?
I think it should be left in because it specifically says preclude all commercial public da, da, da uses that would change the rural residential character. And I think it should stay.
To. Mont, Monty?
Oh, uh, I, I, I kind of thought it should be out since it's publicly funded. I, I don't think the, the public should be included from it, uh, so I would take it out, but I'm not totally.
I, I guess I would side with um with Jasmine in that, again, I think, and, and the metro district, which is the goal is to continue to maintain the rural characteristic. Or rural residential character, um, which um I'd be inclined to leave public in.
Jeffrey, you and Jasmine have changed my mind. Because of that second, the last, the end of the first sentence that has to do with the changing the rural residential character.
And, and that's the heart of what I think, sorry to Suzanne, I think that's the heart of what the, the, the metro district as well as the caucus has been saying.
Yes.
Um, so I'm hearing three to two, um, that would be Suzanne, Jasmine and Jeffrey would be, I'll leave it in. And I've heard, Monty, did I hear a remove?
I, I'd say remove because I don't know how the public really takes away from the rural character. I mean, it's a, it's a farm collective and a ranch and stuff like that and letting public do it. I mean, I, I don't see it as the public is taking away the rule. So I would say take it out, but you know, that's just my point.
Chelsea?
I think I'm, I'm stand by my removal of it because the existing uses for what it, what it's allowed and it's, it's entitlements now for its existing uses aren't. Aren't non-public, the, the point is public people will be using it, so it would be counterintuitive to, to put the word in.
Further discussion regarding public versus removal? I think we are in the remove category three to two on that one, which would be consistent with the Brush Creek um metro district's requests.
Um, I wanted to clarify earlier, Jeffrey, I'm not exhausted. In fact, I'm, I'm going to the gym after this because I've got a lot of energy. But I just, and I probably agree with all of the city's comments, I think consistently every red line that John's asked for. I agree with, my, my only point is I don't like making ad hoc red line changes at the last second for one particular referral agency. Without giving ample time for the parties that have the most interest and stake in this to discuss the proposed red line changes amongst themselves. And come to us with, you know, what, what seems like a, a fair compromise, um, if that's possible. And if it's not possible, then present us with objective arguments for either um for, per presentation of the language. So, uh, but I don't think that um the metro districts had that opportunity and in all fairness, um, there's no rush. So I want, I want the parties to deliberate amongst themselves and reach, reach the best possible solution for this important master plan.
Well, we will turn this revised plan around as soon as possible and post it. Um, so that everybody has ample opportunity to discuss it before the next meeting.
And uh with respect to this particular recommendation objective. Um, would you like to just leave this one on the table for May third? It sounds as though there's, was it, I'm sorry, Jeffrey, was it three two to um remove?
It was Jasmine, um Suzanne and Jeffrey removed public, um, which again, I think is, which is, which was three to two. The, the pros for keeping it in were Chelsea and um Monty. And removing it would be consistent with the boldface line that's above it, um, which.
No, no, wait.
Jasmine?
I want to leave public in.
Sorry, I thought the vote was three two to leave it in.
Sorry, three two to leave it in, apologies, that was my, I'm not going to the gym. I, um, I will not be going to the gym after this.
So I don't, so I think what I'm hearing is that we'll leave it in um for discussion and, and bring it back on May third for a final. A discussion after the, perhaps after the metro district has a chance to uh coordinate with the city and staff on, on changes that are being made.
On that topic, Ellen, can you give us uh Rye's opinion on the use of the word public in this objective?
Yes.
Please, thanks.
And, and, and my sarcasm aside and, and, and sardonic nature aside, um, when the uh. Normally, the way we publish a packet, packets actually have the comments attached to it. In this case, they were behind a lock and key, uh, password protected. And it was unclear when the, the documents actually came into play. So I found that awkward. So here's your agenda and AIS, and then here's all the supporting documents. And then there was a link out to a Google Drive uh for all of the referral comments. And you have no idea if a new referral comment came in. It's a really sneaky way of putting a referral comment in the day of a meeting. Um, and I don't know if I necessarily agree that's the right way to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
And I, I'm not gonna poll the commissioners and say, hey, who went to the drive and actually downloaded all of the PDF comments? But we're used to three hundred page packets and this was kind of a strange way of um delivering information.
Apologies on that, as I, as I said earlier, um, all of the comments that we've received. Up till the, the comments that were discussed tonight and this afternoon, um, were incorporated in the draft plan. And have been discussed um in previous meetings. So apologies that they were not um, you know, in, that they were not uh included as part of your packet um previously. But they have been incorporated and you have discussed all of the comments that we've received to date, with the exception of the comments made um tonight. So just to clarify there, um, but apologies if that was an awkward uh awkward way to uh, to distribute uh information.
Uh, again, it's not, I don't, I'm not looking for an apology, I, I'm merely stating that um, it, it's. We're just inconsistent in the way the packets are disseminated. Um, and we've had a recent hearing where someone came in with an updated site plan that was not posted to the public. Um, and I'm, I just, it's an overall concern that the public sees all of the, the input into the decision-making. Um, and that would include all the referral comments.
And just as a closing comment for my clarity, who will be trying to turn this around for you quickly. I believe what I heard is that all of the other changes that were discussed this evening, not the ones brought up by John's piece, were accepted by the planning commission.
Yeah, if, if we needed to um do a show of hands for overall, I mean, I think we were basically straw pulling as we went through uh each of the ideas. But the answer, uh, again, and um, I will speak, and we have plenty of signings that we accepted the plan as noted. And then there were about seven items from John's list that we went through, um, and we straw pulled along the way, um, each of those.
Okay, it's important that the metro district have the opportunity to respond to those in due course.
And if I can just say, my, my apologies, I, I, it was not my intent to derail this. I was uh responding to the latest version that I saw, which was on um from four twelve twenty twenty-two. So my apologies, uh, absolutely did not mean to derail this.
Now, we appreciate you joining us. And again, I think hopefully um the planning commissioner's staff in the metro district and the caucus will all say that this time spent. Uh, on, on, you know, in April and May is worth it relative to the location extents that we, that we anticipate over the next couple of years. And so, um, you know, Tom Newland, you, I'm, I'm about to call for a continuance, but we would love some final words from Tom Newland and then Jasmine, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think the board meeting's on Thursday, so I can bring all this to them. Um, hopefully, this document uh with the changes if possible, but they'll have time to consider it and see what they want, where they want to go. So thank you.
Likewise, thanks for all your time and, and your input. Um, I, 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 I will say, and Jasmine, you first, sorry, Jasmine?
Oh, I was just going to move to uh continue the hearing to May third.
I have a move from Jasmine, I'm assuming a second, I thought, from Chelsea?
Yes.
Um, all of those in favor of a move to May third, to the continuation of the public hearing of the Brush Creek um caucus master plan? Jasmine?
Yes.
Uh, Chelsea?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Suzanne Kaski?
Yes.
And Jeffrey is a yes. Um, any further comments? Uh, again, I appreciate everyone's time. I, I do hope this um results in um, you know, just some incredible location extents over the next couple of years. And this is time well spent. Apologies um to anyone that I offended this evening. I will never use the term salad bar to reference building a- again in my life after this final reference. Closing comments, otherwise a motion to adjourn.
I still.
Uh, so I've got Suzanne and Jasmine on the, on the um closing. Um, thank you so much, enjoy your evening, enjoy the gym and um happy April nineteenth, everyone.
And happy birthday to you, Jeffrey.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Bye, everyone. Be well.
You as well, thanks.
Thank you.